Good morning. The special meeting of the Belleflower City Council and the Planning Commission is called to order on Thursday, March 18, 2021, at 10:04 a.m. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you're providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Welcome, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Here.
Mayor Dutton? Mayor Coops? Commissioner Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Mendez?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson? Vice Chair Drake?
Present.
Mayor Franzen?
We have two council members, Mayor Dan Coops and Mayor Protem Dutton, and two commissioners, Chairman Franzen and Commissioner Wilson, will be recused from this meeting because of conflict on the property that they own subject to this agenda of the meeting. So is there a motion to excuse the absence of two council members and two commissioners?
Yes, so moved. Okay, Ray Hamada.
Mr. Councilmember.
Motion by Councilmember Hamada, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez. Without objection, that will be the order. Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.3a, the public may address the city council only on matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page 2 of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Before we do that, I'd like to make the announcement. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If by phone app, it will appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, please star nine to raise your hand. You'll be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute yourself, your microphone, so that you can provide your comments. Do you have any public comments this morning, Madam City Clerk?
I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature. I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, Madam Deputy City Clerk. With that, I will move on to item 4A, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action to conduct a workshop regarding the sixth cycle 2021-2029 Housing Element update. As you know, this council, the staff and the planning staff has been preparing for this for some time now. We've got our consultant set up. Beth is willing and raring to go to start talking to the council about this issue. This is the first of several meetings at which we will discuss this issue. And I think I'll just go ahead and introduce Beth to get it started, and we'll go forward.
Thank you. Good morning, City Council and Planning Commissioners. So today is our workshop regarding the housing element. It's twofold. Our consultant from National Core, Sarah Walker, will be doing the first part of the presentation. And then I will end the presentation with my section. And so I'm going to turn it over to Sarah. Again, she's from National Core, and her and her team have been working on drafting the housing element for us. And she'll go over the general overview of the housing element, and then we'll go into more specifics.
Good morning, and thank you, Elizabeth. And thank you to the Planning Commission and the City Council for having us this morning. I'm going to go ahead and try to get my presentation up. Give me just a second. More time. Okay. All right, is that showing up correctly, I hope? Okay, thank you again. My name is Sarah Walker, and I am a senior project manager with National Community Renaissance. And we have been working with city staff on the update for the housing element for the 2021 to 2029 planning period. So today, I'm here to kind of give an overview of what a housing element is and the various contents that are included within that document. And I'll also give a brief overview on the regional housing needs allocation or the RENA, as well as what we're seeing with the city demographics as they relate to housing. I was going to give a brief update on new legislation that's going to affect this planning period, as well as the benefits of achieving certification. And then from there, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth to talk about the sites inventory, as well as kind of the next steps for the process. So just to give a high-level overview, the housing element is one of seven state-mandated elements of the general plan. Every city in California is required to have a general plan, which is the city's blueprint for guiding new development and decision-making. And the housing element is a policy document that is designed to evaluate housing needs and establish programs that can be used by actions related to housing. So the housing element is the only element that is required to be updated every eight years and requires certification from the state. So the city of Belleflower's current housing element was adopted last by City Council in 2013. So that last housing element was for the fifth planning cycle, which covered the years 2014 to 2021. We are currently updating the housing element for the sixth planning period, which covers the years 2021 to 2029. And the housing element is due to the state ideally by October 15th of this year. So the city of Belleflower's housing element is broken into seven sections. The introduction serves as a window into the document. It provides a high-level summary of the requirements, including general plan consistency, as well as information on public participation. The housing plan includes the goals and policy actions that are focused on housing. And the community profile in the housing needs section provide a detailed breakdown of demographic information, such as population trends, employment, householding characteristics, and also looks at special needs groups, such as the elderly, single-parent households, homeless, or disabled. The housing constraints section analyzes governmental constraints, which could be things like zoning or processing times, as well as non-governmental constraints, which are things like land cost and market trends, and how they impact housing. The sixth section is the Housing Resources section, which includes an analysis of funding sources, as well as land resources that are available in the city, and also includes that detailed sites inventory. And then finally, we do include a progress report that looks at how well the city did at implementing its previous housing element for the 2014 to 2021 planning period. So what drives the Housing Element update process is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or the RENA. And the RENA begins up at the state, where the Department of Housing and Community Development allocates units to the Regional Association of Governments, and which for Belleflower is SCAG, or the Southern California Association of Governments. SCAG is then responsible for allocating units to their missions. And this is based on a pretty robust methodology. And every jurisdiction is allocated what is deemed to be their fair share of units. And SCAG has been responsible for planning for these units through the land inventory. So for the 2021 to 2029 planning period, the city of Belleflower was assigned 1,735 units. And this is broken down into income categories. So this includes 1,015 units for very low-income households that are earning 50% of the area median income or below, 488 units for low-income households, which are those earning between 51 and 80% of the area median income, 553 units for moderate-income households that are earning between 81 to 120% of the area median income, and then 1,679 units for above-moderate or essentially market-rate units. So the state does recognize that cities are not housing developers and that the city's responsibility is to create opportunities in their land use plan and to remove constraints in order to facilitate residential development through their policies. And so with RENA, the state has been very focused on the development of deed-restricted housing for those lower-income categories. And so for the 2021 to 2029 planning period, the city has had the unique opportunity to plan ahead, which Elizabeth will dive into in more detail, but kind of focusing on those directing growth into areas that the city wants to see redevelop and preserving and enhancing existing neighborhoods.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the PowerPoint doesn't completely come across.
Oh, no.
Unless I'm the only one that's seeing that, but I don't see the full page on the PowerPoint.
Okay. Had that happened once before. Is it better now?
Yes.
Interesting. I did not do anything. Okay, please, yeah, feel free to stop me if that happens again. Do you need me to back up and cover anything? Again?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. And so in addition to looking at need based on income, the state requires that the city look at specific population groups that may have difficulty finding housing. So I wanted to kind of briefly share what we're seeing based on the 2019 American Community Survey data. Unfortunately, the new census data is not available, and we are trying to be consistent with the data sets that were provided by SCAG, which should help streamline the elements review with the state. So the city has grown to include, and again, these are estimates, but roughly 78,110 residents in roughly 23,340 households, which equates to an average household size of 3.3 persons per unit. Approximately 18% of the households in the cities are considered large households with more than five members. 29% are female-headed households. And approximately 11% are elderly households. And then based on the city's recent homeless survey, there were approximately 60 unsheltered individuals in the city. And I know the city has been very proactive with services and even having a shelter in the city to help with addressing this issue. So since the last Housing Element update, there have been a number of legislative changes that have occurred that we will need to address within the document. And so what generally we are seeing is that the state is very focused on ensuring that cities are accountable and that there is oversight in encouraging housing development. So I wanted to just highlight a couple of the legislative changes that we will be incorporating. So with AB 1397, 1486, and SB 6, the state has changed the format of the sites inventory and provided their own template, and also increased the level of scrutiny, really wanting to see that the sites that the city is identifying have real potential to be redeveloped during the planning period in order to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation. AB 686 requires that all housing elements now include a program to affirmatively further for housing and promote housing opportunities throughout the community for purposes. And this is something that we've been working with staff on to ensure that our sites are not concentrated in one area and that they are dispersed throughout the city. SB 166 is the No Net Loss Law, which requires jurisdictions to ensure that their inventory throughout the planning period is providing an adequate number of sites in order to meet the RENA allocation. And so should one site be developed with a non-residential use, the city still needs to have available sufficient sites to accommodate their RENA allocation. So I just wanted to quickly explain why it's important for the city to maintain a certified housing element. It ensures timely access to state infrastructure bonds for capital improvement projects. It ensures that developers are eligible for state funding. For example, for the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Program or ASIC funding, the city must have a certified housing element in order for a developer to apply for that funding. It ensures access to CBGT and home funds. It also ensures that the city helps or maintains a jobs-housing balance, reducing traffic impacts and retaining a local employment base. It also ensures that the city can direct growth within the community, planning for areas, planning for density in appropriate areas. And worst-case scenario, if the housing element is not certified, the general plan can be deemed invalid or inadequate. And worst-case scenario, that could result in lawsuits or a loss of control over the approval. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Elizabeth at this time to talk about the sites inventory.
Thank you. So as Sarah mentioned, as part of the Housing Resources section of the housing element, we do have to provide a detailed site inventory of where the housing units can be accommodated. So since Belleflower is already a built-out city, we have very little vacant land to build on. We had to review areas that could potentially be rezoned or rezoned to either mixed-use or residential. And staff focused on four main areas. And it includes areas that can support mixed-use or residential development, areas that are located adjacent to transit. And we did focus on the future location of the metro station, areas that are underutilized and underdeveloped, and areas that can be revitalized by allowing new mixed-use or residential development. Sarah, can you turn it to the next slide, please? And so we did create a map to really show where we would be concentrating on doing an analysis on. As you can see, a good chunk of where we think that the sites can be accommodated for is within our downtown. So it's a little bit hard to see, but we did outline the areas in teal. And then I put a black circle around those areas, so you can focus more on those. And so the sites that we're focusing on is Belleflower Boulevard, just north of Alondra to the southerly border, the intersection of Clark and Alondra, and right across the street on the northwest corner was a recent development from City Ventures, and that included mixed-use. The Clark Avenue, between just north of Park Street and the southerly border of the city, areas along Artesia, mainly between Clark Avenue and Virginia, the former Kmart site, which is on the northeast part of town, and the northwest and northeast corners of Woodruff and Artesia. So these areas, these are areas that we're going to study more to see how many units can be accommodated for. We did do a rough estimate on how many units can be accommodated in these areas. And for the most part, the area along Belleflower Boulevard, especially adjacent to where the future transit station would be, that could potentially accommodate most, if not all, of the RENA obligation. But we did include the other areas for the council and the planning commission to consider, because we could look at those areas as well to include into the sites inventory. I will add that this is only part of the housing element. After certification of the element, we do need to come back to the planning commission and council for all the land use changes. So this is the overall plan for housing. Once the housing element is certified by HCD, then we have to implement the housing plan. And that would lead to likely zone changes and general plan amendments and public hearings back before the planning commission and the city. Sarah, can you turn it to the next slide, please? In terms of next steps, so we're in the first part of the housing element, which is between January and April. We are drafting the technical report. We're having the community workshop, which is this workshop in front of the planning commission and council with members of the public. And we also have information on the city's website regarding housing frequently asked questions related to the housing element and a survey the public can take to help inform us of housing needed within the city. The next step in the process is the administrative draft of the element. And we would submit that for essentially a preliminary compliance review with HCD. Generally, they have 60 days to provide us with comments. And then also, there's going to be a kickoff with the sequoia analysis, which is next. And then the final stage is adoption and certification. At this point in time, we would be completed with a sequoia analysis, and we would have public hearings in front of the planning commission, who would make a recommendation to the city council for adoption. Following adoption, and we do anticipate these hearings to be in September and October of this year. And then following adoption by the council, we would then submit to HCD, and we need to do that by October 15th, 2021. And then once it goes to HCD, they have a 90-day review period before we receive back comments or before we hear back if our element has been certified. That concludes mine and Sarah's presentations. For more information, definitely you can reach out to National Core and also myself and the planning staff for any additional information. And that concludes our presentation. We're both available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Elizabeth, for your presentation. Before I open the meeting to questions from the council members and commissioners, let me just emphasize one point that Sarah made during the presentation, and that is regarding the RENA allocation. If you look at the allocation, we're allocated 3,735 homes over eight years. So if you spread it out over eight years, that would be approximately 450, between 450, 460 units each year. And that's a lot of homes. And I want to reemphasize what Sarah mentioned, that the city is not required to build those homes. It's up to the private sector. The city's obligation is to adapt plans and programs to facilitate the construction of those homes. So I want to make sure that it's very clear that the city is not in the business of constructing over close to 4,000 homes over the next eight years. So with that, I'd like to turn over to you. Any questions from, let me start with Councilmember Hamada. You have any question of Sarah or Elizabeth?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Santenaz. First off, Elizabeth, Sarah, thank you for your work on this endeavor. I was thinking back, you know, personally, that again, as a practitioner and as a decision-maker, I've been involved in four of these. So it goes back, and I understand the struggles. And I wanted to follow up with the comments from the councilmen with SCAG. It was definitely not easy. I know that both, again, Councilman Santenaz and myself, we were part of the regional council during the time when this was getting discussed and finally, you know, taking act.
Councilmember Hamada, we lost your audio. We cannot hear you.
All right, I just want to be sure, because I just saw a message that my internet was unstable, so hopefully it's working. Just like everybody freezes, or I froze. But thank you. But just quickly, again, the discussion on the methodology, again, brought a lot of discussion. When it came down to votes, it was a very, it turned out to be very critical for, you know, member cities to, you know, to attend. And then, but I think at the end of the day, obviously, there's some more work on legislation, and then that's where we're, I think, headed. But getting back to questions on the subject here, staff, I just wanted, just thinking back about, you know, general plan consistency and zoning, are there any, what I call, problem areas in town where the zoning is not consistent with the general plan? That's the first question. And then the current densities that are, you know, that are out there right now. First off, for the TOD area, and then for, you know, the PD, the R3, the R2. I just wanted to put that out there for just a base and to, again, to have everybody, again, have that understanding that what's, you know, what's, again, are the possibilities out there for, you know, future housing development?
Sure. Councilmember Hamada, there are sections of the city where the zoning and general plan do not match. I will say there, it's very few, but I have seen in the past where the zoning does not match the general plan. So that is for sure. In terms of density, we are looking to have the highest density in the downtown area. If you recall, back in October of 2019, we did adopt the TOD, the Transit-Oriented Development-Specific Plan. That allowed for a density of 100 dwelling units per acre. So we were thinking of potentially providing that same density within the downtown area, and that would essentially get us to meet a good portion of our RENA. Everywhere else in the city, it may not make sense to go that dense. And so in conversations with our consultant and staff, we have been looking at a density of anywhere between 30 dwelling units per acre to 50.
All right.
And as we progress with the housing element, we'll be looking more closely to see if those densities fit within those specific areas.
Yes. All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Sanchez?
To Councilmember Santenaz, first off, good morning, everyone. It's good to be here with everyone. Great presentation, Beth and Sarah, thank you for the information. And then again, for all the clarification. Nope, this is just the first phase. To me, it makes sense with the focus on the downtown, especially with the light rail coming in, you know, to be able to meet that and bring more. Really made sense to me. I like the inclusion of the utilized and some revitalization. On that note, I'd like to really bring to the table, or at least have the consideration to throw in there, and hear your opinions and thoughts on the Old Stater Brothers location. They put in Artesia. Is the need of revitalization, and it's underdeveloped at this point in time. When I'm looking at that area, as well as, you know, especially that area, because it's bordering the 91, and it's closer to other commercial sites, I could definitely see a site there like the Source, the OC, which is a multi-development complex with entertainment, restaurants, and outdoor, kind of a mall concept. I don't believe the Source OC has any housing component elements to it, but I believe that that might be something viable here, at least because the reality is 40,000 square foot with a very deep-end building, really, you know, nowadays isn't really meeting the standards of a lot of commercial development. So just want to throw that in there and kind of see if that could be of consideration as well. And then my other thing that I'd like to kind of just bring up, well, actually, Beth, if you don't mind, kind of going into that, what do you think on that location, the Artesia? Location?
Councilmember Sanchez, your audio was in and out, but I heard Stater Brothers site for potential for housing sites. So I'll touch on that. We definitely can take a look at that location. I know at some point in time, there was. Um, I know at some point in time, there was discussions, uh, regarding mixed use. And so that is actually a rather large area where we can accommodate housing. Um, so I would say that we can definitely look into this area to potentially add into the site's inventory. Um, again, throughout the process, we'll look more closely at what density could fit there the best. And hopefully that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. And, and I'm, I am hearing that, uh, going back and forth in the audio. It looks like it's cutting off. I apologize. I might hop on my phone too. And then, uh, my second question, looking at the low income side of things, the very low income, um, specifically. Or, uh, more, you know.
Councilmember Sanchez, your audio is kind of going in and out.
Second phase, right? Right now, we have a temporary shelter and then obviously the next phase after maybe. Let me. How about now? Can you hear me?
You, you may want to repeat what you said because I don't think it was kind of audible to us.
Let me, uh, um. Let me hop on my cellphone. If you want to skip and go, I can come back. Thank you, Councilmember Santinaz.
All right. Okay. So while, while you're switching to your phone, uh, will it take long or should I switch to another commissioner?
No, please switch to a commissioner.
Okay. So while you're switching your, uh, communication link, uh, let me, um, let me move on to, uh, Vice Chair Drake. Do you have any question of Sarah or Elizabeth?
No, good morning, everybody. Thanks. Pretty, it's a very detailed, uh, presentation. A lot of work went into it. And the only que, the only questions I had was the timeline for this. I, maybe I missed it because I couldn't hear the, the audio from my end was going in and out and I didn't see, uh, the timeline for getting this done or, or completed, uh, to meet the, the. The deadline for this.
Yes. So we do have to have a certifi, or we have to have an adopted element, um, to HCD by October twenty twenty one. So our timeline is, um, to get in front of the planning commission with all the final documents and the sequo analysis done. Uh, that will likely happen in September of twenty twenty one. And then following planning commission, we do go to the council and that will likely be September, October twenty twenty one. And then we submit to HCD for review and final certification.
Beth, I think, Beth, if I could interrupt, I think Sarah had a page on that that showed all the deadlines, the basic deadlines on one of her worksheets. That might visually provide all that stuff in a very succinct way.
Okay, I must have missed that. I don't know. Okay, that was the question. And so it will come back before planning and on to the council at some point.
Absolutely. Yes.
That, that was the question. Uh, I think it's, it's pretty detailed and pretty self-explanatory and. That was pretty much the other questions I had at this time, the only other questions I had at this time. So appreciate all the work everybody's done over this over the past years and got us to this point. Uh, I mean, we can get through this thing and, uh, move forward. That's about it for me.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Drake. Um, Councilmember Sanchez, are you back on?
Yes, Councilmember Santinaz, thank you. I'm on my phone, so does that sound much better?
Yes.
For audio purposes, thank you. All right. Sorry. So I think the, the second question I had. Was more so, or at least comment, was more so leaning on the very low income side of the housing, uh, component. I know we currently have a shelter, uh, it's a temporary shelter, um, lovely at that. And, uh, but I believe that there's the next phase, right, which is, uh, more of a housing, permanent housing for individuals exiting, um, homelessness. And so I guess my question to you or to staff here is, um, has that been considered in this plan as to where something like that would really go into? And maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken here, but when I'm looking at the downtown development, really, that's, I think that's going to be more directed towards your moderate, so, to above moderate housing probably. And I might be mistaken, so I'm just kind of trying to get a little bit of understanding as to where your very low to low income housing development would kind of go in this, uh, possible development areas.
Uh, sure, commission, I'm sorry, Councilmember Sanchez.
Okay.
So the, we do get credit for very low and low income. And that's based on the dwelling unit density that we assign to these specific sites. And, um, hopefully I can ask the consultant to elaborate more on that. But as I understand it, the higher density you provide for these areas, the more you get credit towards the very low and low. And I'll turn it over to Sarah and see if she can help assist with that question as well.
Yeah, so this is, oh, I'm sorry, this is somewhat tied to some of the legislative changes that we're seeing that traditionally in the past, this has been more of an accounting exercise where. You know, you identify sites, there's an, there's a density, a minimum density. So the state has determined that if a site is zoned for thirty dwelling units an acre or higher. That that is most likely, um, provides potential for the development of affordable housing. And, um, you know, that is probably the case that most affordable housing developments need a higher density in order to be able to make it pencil. So what's different about this, this time period or this planning period is that there is more accountability on the city. Um, in terms of if a site is identified in the inventory. It meets that default density of thirty dwelling units per acre, like much of the doubt, you know, that, uh, Alondra Bellflower corridor would. Um, it can be identified in the inventory as available to accommodate that very low and low income category. But if it's not developed as a deed restricted unit, the city still needs to be able to show that they have land available for. To meet that Rena allocation. So I think the goal too is not, you know, it's not likely that every single unit within that downtown area around the station area is going to be. You know, all affordable housing. That's not what I think anybody, that's not good planning and that's not what anybody wants. So the idea is to kind of disperse, you know, throughout some of these areas, the different income levels to create a balance. I don't know if that, that.
And if I can touch a little bit further on that, um, and definitely access to transit is also part of the equation. When considering very low and low, um, housing units. So I did want to throw that in and then Councilmember Sanchez, you also had a question regarding the homeless shelter and permanent housing. Um, I believe in order to be counted towards the arena, it has to be permanent housing. And Sarah, can you chime in on that as well?
Yes, that is the case, that it needs to be deed restricted, um, permanent housing. I mean, the city certainly does get to, um, talk, we have talked quite a bit about the, um, kingdom causes, the homeless shelter that was developed and, um. Tried to really, you know, explain that accomplishment, but generally the Rena is intended to, um, focus on permanent housing units.
God, thank you. So if we were ever to embark on a project, then would, excuse me. If we were ever to embark on a project that was intended for, um, permanent shelter for like the next stage of, of a temporary shelter. That be a separate conversation, then we're, we're not going to see that in this, uh, we don't need to have it in the Rena, right? Is that, it's kind of what I'm hearing?
Right. It, it, it doesn't necessarily need to be specifically identified in the Rena. You're kind of doing that by identifying all these different sites that can accommodate very low and low income housing. And just, um, you know, having a background in development, a lot of the funding sources right now for those very low and low income housing developments. Are focused on permanent supportive housing. So there is already kind of a built-in tie, if that makes sense.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Now, uh, Councilmember Santinaz, I think that concludes my comments and questions at this time. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the patience.
Councilmember Sanchez, um, moving on to, uh, uh, Commissioner Garza. Good to see you, sir. I, I have to start getting used to calling you Commissioner.
It's very nice to see you, Honorable Chair, my fellow friends. Um, thank you for the opportunity. My first question is with regards to, and I may have missed it in the presentation, if I do, if I did, I apologize. But what is the definition of a unit according to this process? Is it, is it an apartment, uh, unit? Is it mobile home unit? Is it an ADU? Is it a, um, a single family? Is it all of the above condos? I just want to make sure.
The above.
Okay, great. So, um, as we embark on this process of, 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 uh, uh, outlaying where. These portions of our city would be appropriate to meet these requirements. Uh, so above this, any type of, in this parallel track that we're doing as we go to the Rena process, but also. Um, as we're complying or embarking or complying with ADU statewide mandates. Um, we could, you know, the parallel processes, they're not interlinked. But is there a possibility that we could, uh, satisfy our Rena numbers or in our obligations? Not exclusively through the ADU component, but I mean, that that's going to potentially add to the housing mix and, and help our city meet those requirements?
Commissioner Garza, thank you for bringing this up because it has been a really big topic that we've been discussing with National Core. Because essentially every housing site can have an ADU. So how come that doesn't count towards the Rena? And pretty much what we've been hearing is the state doesn't have very clear guidelines of how many units we can use through ADUs to go to Rena. We can use ADUs to meet our Rena, but only a certain percentage. And it's really kind of unclear, um, exactly what HCD is looking for in terms of how we get that number. And maybe Sarah can elaborate a little bit more, but I know it's kind of touch and go. Yes, we can accommodate Rena with ADUs, but not all the ADUs.
And Sarah, I mean, the, the city has done an amazing job with accessory dwelling units. It's pretty exciting to see as a consultant. And, and so, I mean, what is interesting about this is they've been pushing ADUs as an affordable housing source. The state has, um, when it comes to the housing element, though, they've been very specific that in order to count. Uh, basically, you have to provide a narrative or a discussion about. Where the ADUs are coming in at affordability wise. So if we can provide some sort of evidence that shows that ADUs that are being developed in the city are being rented out and kind of a, I mean, even a. Small survey of kind of what those rents are, we can make the case that the city is, you know, using this as an affordable housing source for whatever level. This may, I mean, of often of the ADUs are a good source of moderate income. That's usually kind of where they fall and that is often an income category that's difficult to satisfy. There's not funding for it. It's not market rate. So I think that's probably where we're going to focus with the ADUs is on that moderate income category. And we've included a question in our survey to try to get information. Um, if people have an ADU, they have the opportunity in that survey to provide information to us so that we can make that justification. Um, that these units should count towards the cities.
Okay. Thank you so much for clarifying that. I know that it's been a big source of frustration to a lot of us that have advocated at the statewide level. In terms of, again, these processes being undertaken at the same time and we don't have really those clear guidelines and we're kind of, you know, again, frustrating. I know I'm just, uh, preaching to the choir here, but it's just, I just wanted to make sure that I put that on the record that if, you know, as, uh, if ADUs end up becoming a sizable component in our city. Uh, I just want the record to reflect that that could be used to satisfy our requirements going forward and hopefully even potentially get credit for the next cycle. So, okay. So my next question is, uh, this is more historical. During the fifth cycle, um, did our city, obviously, our city doesn't produce housing stock. Um, but did, uh, did our goals or the goals that were imposed upon the city for the fifth cycle, did we meet those goals actually production wise?
No, we have not. And it's not uncommon that we don't meet the entire obligation. Um, in just a quick check, we did build three hundred and eighty-five units to date. Um, in our last cycle, we had to accommodate for a combination of the fifth cycle and the fourth cycle, I believe. And that was about a thousand sixty-nine units. And so, um, it sounds like we are, we've built three hundred and eighty-five units within that cycle. So we are short.
Okay. Just good to know and just to share with everyone, right, that we, um, we met our requirement in terms of actually zoning for it, but the production wise, which is out of our control, we, we didn't.
Yes.
Um, in terms of what's proposed before us today, Beth, um, do we feel that, that the outlines of the areas that you've identified, you and your staff have identified. That, uh, we would be able to meet the requirements, um, for HCD?
Yes, we are pretty confident with, um, the possible development areas or opportunity areas that we can meet the Rena. I will say we looked at it very conservative, conservatively, and we are actually, um, past the Rena quite substantially. So, um, with all the housing sites that you've ident, or that we've identified, and even with a Stater Brother's site, we are likely way over our Rena. We don't want to be too high because we still need to, we still need to plan for the next cycle. So we don't want to get penalized for that. Um, but we do want to narrow it down so that we're comfortable with the number that we're at, which will likely be, uh, a number higher than the Rena. Because we also have to accommodate for no net loss. Um, hopefully I explained that correctly, but I, we are on the right track and we do feel confident that we can meet the Rena.
Okay. So, which you, you brought up a good point. Um, so are today, in terms of the guidance, aside from us giving you our thoughts and our opinions and our feedback we suffer, we presented. Is one element you're looking for today actually, um, a, uh, for us to narrow down, like to scale down, what you proposed? Or, or is what you propose is okay? Because if you're looking for us to scale down and for us to identify areas that like, we shouldn't do it here because we already meet it with the downtown TOD. I just want to make sure I get some clarity in terms of what you're looking for in terms of guidance on that.
Sure. So I, I will say that, um, our next step as staff is to narrow it down. Um, but generally for this workshop, we do want to know if the areas that we've identified, um, are acceptable to keep going down. And if you feel adamant that sites should not be included, um, then we would like to know that now. So that when our next step, which is further analyzing this, these sites, we can, um, take into consideration the planning commission and the city council's comments.
You know, great. Thank you for that. Um, my personal opinion, uh, Honorable Chair is that, uh, I think at this point in time. And I'm absolutely open to your opinion, but I think at this time I'd rather have a little more, right? And as we get to the next stage, then start narrowing it down, right? And start crossing, uh, uh, areas off rather than, because that way, at least as you go, uh, as you go through the analysis of staff. Uh, you'll have more to play with in, in cases, you're, uh, verifying numbers and data and you find out that maybe we don't meet the requirement. Um, you know, we're kind of buying where we didn't identify enough areas. I think it's personally, I think it's more conservative just to go with more and, and narrow it down in the next stage in October. Uh, just again, just, just some thoughts and opinions. I definitely am a fan of the areas you've identified. I think there's opportunities here for us to, uh, rethink and reimagine, uh, some areas of our city that are, um. That we've historically zoned a certain way and, uh, they had a moderation of success. But I think, um, if we can convert this, this task, this challenge of, of how do we create housing stock? But if we do it in a way where it can not only meet our requirements, but also serve as catalyst for us to, uh, have additional development. Um, that produces a net, uh, benefit to the community. I think it's a win-win. So, um, that leads me to my next point, which is I'm, I, I'm definitely in favor of. Uh, again, just for the record, that, that these areas that have been identified by staff, that they be mixed use. Uh, in my current observation, I, I don't think having exclusive residential to these areas identified is, um, would be a benefit to the community and to the city. I, I think long-term, I think, uh, having mixed use as an analytical component to these areas that, that have been identified would be, uh, again, a great benefit. At this point in time, uh, definitely, um, as we get into, um. Um, alternative modes of transportation, especially with the rail coming into our city. Uh, I definitely think uh, then making walkability uh would be a huge component. Uh, and I think uh, by focusing on mixed use in these areas, uh, again, with that would incentivize that walkability. Um, and make that a an objective would be fantastic, not only again for development wise, but also for as a net health benefit to our community. Um. And I I was gonna ask about. Uh, inclusionary zoning, but I I think at this point in time, considering the fact that we already meet. Would meet our requirements based off of the current proposed plan by staff, I'm I'll I'll defer that conversation to uh later on. Um, I don't think it's appropriate at this time, and then. Uh, and I think uh, council member Sanchez actually touched on one of my questions, which is gonna be. Um, with regards to page two in the staff report on the income groups. In terms of the appropriate mix, right, do we select each uh. Income group to be in a certain area of town, but it sounds from what I heard that uh, the density component itself was satisfied that requirement, correct?
Yes, Sarah, do you have anything to add?
Okay, and then um, regarding the uh, the T O D specific plan that, you know, the council. Uh, did before, um, I think that's it's a nice foundation. I definitely think this presents an opportunity to expand that onto our downtown. Um, and north of our downtown as well, and you right there in the Alondra um corridor area, I think with the advent of this rail line coming in. It just presents that opportunity for our city to to capitalize and maybe again reimagine. Uh, our downtown area, and it's not to say that that we should completely raise down our downtown area. And start from scratch, that's not at all what I'm saying, but I definitely think that uh, that for those. Uh, landowners that are in that area, uh, that may um. Be open to adding, helping us as a city add housing stock to our city to meet our reading requirements at the same time. Uh, redoing and reimagining our downtown area to uh, take it to the next level to complement that that rail line. I think it's gonna be vital. And so I'm definitely in strong favor of of our downtown area continuing to be included and our specific plan to be expanded in there. Um. I definitely am in favor of uh, I know that while ideally we'd be narrowing down areas rather than expanding areas, I am definitely in favor. Of council member Sanchez proposing the State of Brothers um area be uh assessed as well. Um, I think that area, that that parcel along with the Kmart parcel are really very similar, and I think. Those specific parcels, because they're so sizable, present an opportunity for mixed use, but also for lifestyle type. Developments uh, because of their size, where I think we could fit not only uh residential mix, but also mixed use with commercial. Uh, that's been done successfully as council member Sanchez pointed out before in other areas, and I think. Uh, considering that corridor of the ninety-one freeway, um, I think those two present an opportunity. Uh, hopefully for those landowners to be able to uh, maybe reimagine their lots and and uh. And uh, have some benefit for themselves as well. And um, and last but not least, uh, I just want to thank staff. I think uh, the report that you all did was fantastic. I know it's not easy. Uh, I did share with my fellow planning commissioners, uh, when I be, when I came onto the planning commission that. Uh, we were gonna be embarking on some pretty heavy items. This is the first one. Um, and uh, really excited to be a part of it, and uh, honorable chair, thank you for the opportunity, and that will piece my comments and questions.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Garza, um, Commissioner Mendez.
Yes, thank you for uh, the outstanding report, and a lot of work and detail went into it. Um, is is this gonna um. Effect with the arena uh, in dominant, I mean, in dominant domain on some of these properties to um. Be upgraded or or to meet the arena. allocations?
Commissioner Mendez, um, no, so this is just the overall housing plan. Um, just a blueprint of where we're gonna put housing in the city. Um, we do not, we do not build. So all we need to do is plan for where the housing's gonna go, and then. That's part of this exercise, which is the housing element. Following the housing element. We will then move forward with zone changes, potentially zone changes, general plan amendments, specific plans. Um, other kind of land use um, regulations we can, we can do to. To follow up with housing element, but it's just a plan, it's just zoning, we do not build it. Um, a developer would then have to come in and build to the requirements that we put in place. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I believe so, thank you. Um, so. How would this affect the downtown uh, planning effect if we were to proceed with this? Would it? Uh, affect it much?
Uh, yes, it will, um, in the sense that right now, most of the downtown already accommodates for housing. Um, but this would accommodate for more housing, and um. It all falls in and is really complimentary to the future transit station that's coming in, which was. A kind of the catalyst for our transit oriented development. Um, there's a lot of focus around where that future transit station's gonna go. So just to vision out, you will probably see in the future a lot more density. Within the downtown area, especially around that transit station. Now, that's all dependent if developers come in. Um, but we do believe with the plans in place that we do have. The mechanism for the developers to come in and build the housing.
Okay, well, thank you for your answers, and that's all I have, and I appreciate all the hard work and effort the staff put into this project.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Mendez. Um, I have a couple of questions here, um. Okay, going back to the fifth, the last cycle, the fifth arena cycle, since we came up short. What is the consequence for the city?
None, as we know of. So we've met our obligation, which was we uh, had a certified housing element. We did the implementation to plan for it. Um, we did fall short, but there is no consequence. At least for right now, for falling short. Um, I don't know in the future where H C D is gonna go in terms of enforcement. But as it stands right now, there is no consequence for falling short of the arena.
Okay, now, moving forward, uh, one of the things that you mentioned is there's some consequence if. We don't provide the the housing element on the sixth cycle, other than um. Not qualifying for funding, can you mention other consequence? Consequences of not being able to provide the housing element?
Uh, well, we could. We could, if we don't have our housing element certified in time, then we go down to a four-year cycle. And we definitely don't want to go into a four-year cycle because that means we're expending a lot more time and resources to do this all again. In four years with the same outcome, which is to have a certified housing element. Um, on top of that, we could potentially uh, face lawsuits with the state. Um. You definitely don't want to do that, but case in point, Huntington Beach. Did have a lawsuit with the state of California regarding their housing element. We don't want to fall into that category either. Um, so those are just a couple. Maybe Sarah can also highlight the other ones that I may have missed.
Okay, based on the timeline that you presented, are you confident that this staff has the resources to complete it on time?
Yes.
Okay, so part part of that, I think part of the next step will be um. Uh, getting a public input, correct?
That's correct, and this workshop is part of that, too.
So how do you envision the public um, providing their input into this process? Um, other than, other than this meeting?
We do have information available on our website, so all of the housing um, documents are uploaded. We have the survey. Um, that's also included to get more feedback from the community, um, and we. We have gone back and forth on whether or not we should be conducting potential one-on-one meetings with some people in the community in terms of stakeholders. Um, so we haven't narrowed that down yet, but we have been talking about potentially doing that as well.
Uh, i- is the survey available online? It's a very good list of question, questions when I read it um, two days ago. Uh, it's very comprehensive. Are we providing some kind of an online survey that our residents can participate?
Yes, so it is available on the planning page, but maybe it probably may maybe more beneficial to put it on the homepage.
Yeah, I think.
And.
Yeah, I I think we need to kind of publicize it more. Because um, very seldom would someone go into the planning, planning page, planning commission, uh, planning department page. Unless they have specifically something that they need. Maybe in the homepage, maybe this.
Okay.
Provide some kind of advertising, so that with the more input we get, I think the better off we're gonna be.
Mister Chair, I may.
Yes, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, sir. Um, maybe I'd uh, recommend maybe even step further and taking it to uh, to social media. And actually getting it out to the, you know, to to the community to a more public extent. I think sometimes. Uh, people don't, you know, visit our website as often, so it might just be a good thought to get it out there a little for, a little further if if we're hoping to get more input. That's it, Mister Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then also, can can you, can you show the uh, the map of the potential development areas? Uh, Sarah or Elizabeth?
Um, I can share that, give me one sec. Can you see that?
Uh, yes, okay.
Okay.
So one of the um, quick question on the um, the Kmart site. Out of the three hundred, three thousand seven hundred thirty-five units, how many units are you, are you projecting? To be built on the Kmart site? Just estimate.
Councilmember Santina, so. If we were to go purely um, residential, it would be twenty-two dwelling units per acre. If we were to go um, higher density. Then it would be thirty to fifty dwelling units per acre, but we did run a development scenario in which case. This would be purely residential, and that purely residential, we would be looking at a hundred and forty-four potential units. And that is on the very conservative route.
Okay, so to come up with thirty-seven, thirty-five, what number did you use for the K? I'm just kind of. Um, trying to analyze the impact of the Kmart site with our arena obligation.
Um, it's not much, it's it's about a hundred and forty-four.
That's what you used?
Yes.
Okay, okay, alright.
Now, for example, in comparison to the downtown, um, around. The Walnut area, so let's see, so if you're going to the map, it's the middle section of Bellflower Boulevard. If you can see my cursor, I'm not sure, uh, but it would be the midsection pretty much between Flora Vista and the ninety-one. In comparison, if we went a hundred dwelling units per acre, we're already at three thousand ninety-five units. And that again is on the conservative side, so that is what I um, was explaining earlier, that we could meet a good portion. Of the arena just in our downtown area.
Okay, I I I think that that's very um. Reassuring to me because I was kind of concerned about putting a lot of numbers on the Kmart site, because if it doesn't happen, then. We will not meet our obligation, so that's good. So I think what you did is is spread out the load, so to speak. Into different areas so that we're not dependent on one specific area, so that's ve- very good. Now, um, I don't intend to discuss all these areas, but let me just use one example. Um, the corner of intersection of Alondra and Clark.
Alondra and Clark, yes.
Okay, that's an example. So how does this, how the, how will this work in terms of a developer? Because right now. I think we have a commercial center on the southeast. Uh, with a liquor store, with a couple of restaurants and offices out there, and then on the southwest, um, southwest side. There's the the tire shop. So how do you envision this to be developed?
So there's a couple of ways that we can do it. Um, we could do. An overlay zone, which would basically allow the flexibility to keep the underlying zone and or. Or, I'm sorry, it would allow the flexibility to keep the underlying zone, so if they wanted to do straight commercial, they could. And if they wanted to utilize the benefit of the overlay zone, then they could do that. And that would be likely mixed use to match what's uh, already been built across the street. So um, I would say that that is an option. We could do an overlay zone, or we can do. A specific plan and write it directly into the zoning code, that these are the type of uses that we want to see, which would be also mixed use. Um, now, if we go that route, that would likely make those um, sites non-conforming. Which is okay, but I just wanted to throw both options out there. Or the other side to that is we could potentially rezone it to strictly residential. But um, I think from a staff perspective, we, we probably likely would not recommend that, but I'm just throwing all options out.
Mm-hmm, well, i- it's kind of basic that uh, for developers to come in. Uh, they they need to make money, and money means that there has to be enough density for them. Uh, because the cost of land is is so high that they need to build more, uh, it is most likely gonna go up. So l- let's focus on that, on the southwest side, because I think there's, there's a great potential for that to be developed. Because right now it's only a a tire shop, uh, so there's nothing much to be demolished compared to the southeast side. Where you have a commercial center. Uh, so I I I think um, probability wise, I think there's a good chance, there's greater chance of. The southwest being developed compared again, compared to the, to the south, to the southeast. Now. When when you develop, when you develop this plan, um. So this corner of um, Alondra and Clark, and then you skip all the way to Park.
Yeah.
Um, there, there's a couple of vacant lands there. Um, notably the uh, the uh, the the former temple on Harvard and Clark. And then where the um, the the sign is on the, on the east side of Clark on Harvard. Um, and also, I think, I think uh, Clark is ready for development. If you go down, especially on the, on the east side of Clark from Alondra all the way to Oak Street. Have we considered including that in the plan?
We did, um, actually, we did include a good portion of Clark, pretty much this area that was in between. Um, we originally looked at these areas to see if we could also incorporate it into the plan. Um. There was a lot of smaller parcels, meaning it would take a substantial amount of. Resources from the developer to consolidate all of those small, small parcels. To make a residential or mixed-use development occur. Um, and so based on that, and we were not getting that many units if we incorporated those areas. So based on that, we decided to reduce it to just the sec- the sections that are shown here, um, and. We did that also strategically because. We don't want to be too high above our arena. Um, and we wanted to at least narrow down the certain sections that we thought were the most feasible, which we thought on Clark would be the nodes. Um, for example, the intersection of Clark and Alondra and. The intersection that's just north of the ninety-one freeway. And so at some point, we did consider that, but we did actually narrow it down. Because we thought that the feasibility of that area wasn't necessarily there, and we also didn't want to shoot ourselves in the foot. With being too high above our.
Okay, thank you. And uh, at the same time, nothing prevents the.
Okay, thank you. And uh at the same time, nothing prevents the, a potential developer um from coming to the planning department and to propose a, a change in zoning. Will it be a feasibility?
Right, yeah, uh uh at any time, really, a developer can come in and request for a zone change and a general plan.
Yeah, because, you know, I was thinking about the uh the lot on the property on Clark and Park and and uh and Harvard, the former temple. That's, that's a sizable piece of land.
Yes.
So a developer can come to City Hall and ask for a zoning change for that.
Yes.
Okay, so I I just want to emphasize to potential developers, nothing prevents you developers from coming, coming to City Hall and request for a change because uh wha- what staff has done so far is develop a plan where we, how we can meet arena allocation. Uh and there's a, there's still gonna be some more developments around the city. You know, there's gonna be homes built around it and some homes to be uh demolished, whi- which goes back to the net, net gain because the the demolition of homes will be counted as a negative, right? If it's not, if it's not rebuilt-
Yes.
It's gonna be minus. So, so nothing prevents the developers from developing and others, other areas of the city. So that's, I just want to emphasize that. Okay, very good. Again, thank you so much for the, the presentation. It is um, it's well done. No, it's very comprehensive. Uh ca- can you tell us what is the immediate next step after this meeting?
We are, the immediate next step is preparing the draft of the housing element to submit to HCD and also the kickoff of the CEQA.
Okay. All right, very good. Um fellow council members, commissioners, do you have any other question, uh Elizabeth or Sarah?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Yeah, Councilmember Hamada, go ahead.
Yes, thank you again. I wanted to uh again, put out some more comments. Uh uh again, yes, you do have to be strategic with, with HCD, you know. I mean, you're gonna have a reviewer, which may come from the north part of the state, never even lived in Southern California. And you know, have that understanding, but uh but but I'd agree with the initial start of of those let's see, three, five planning areas, so to speak, uh towards the inventory. Because again, a- as mentioned, uh you know, building can 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 come throughout the entire town to at least uh, you know, fulfill those initial numbers, you know, uh again, for arena. And and again, I think we have in, in, you know, each of our back pockets, you know, other sites. I I mean, I I have sites I know of, you know, uh, you know, the southeast corner of, you know, Somerset and Clark and and there are some areas along Rosecrans that uh that would have potential, other than the Kmart, uh you know, going towards the west. Uh so, but uh again, I'd agree with the comment that uh let's not show, oh, again, all of our cards upfront with the draft and then have the, 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 the backpedal. Uh and that's because, you know, HCD is gonna remember. They have, they have that knack to say, what have I, what happened to, you know, I thought you identified some of these other sites. And then when it gets down to the nitty-gritty, you know, and so on. So I think for a start, uh you know, definitely the downtown is, is the focus. Uh like again, as mentioned with, with the transit. So um uh that's gonna be our focal point. Uh some of the other larger sites, yes, they have potential. Uh I'm kind of still on the, the bandwagon of uh hopefully uh there's some more commercial coming uh to, again, to our town, uh but uh definitely mixed use is a great option. So uh that's, that's, that's the in-between, between uh the exclusive residential versus uh the exclusive commercial. Uh so um uh definitely, uh I, I, I think we have a, a good plan going into, and I I think we're just uh doing some fine tuning, but I, but initially, I think if if we're uh seeing our, you know, arena numbers come forth with these planning areas, uh let's, let's start in, let's start there with the draft before we uh start adding more, more and more sites than uh, because again, uh again, as, as mentioned, a, a okay, a developer can come forward and and uh, you know, uh, you know, work on those sites if, if it's, if it's feasible. Uh and uh if it, if it pencils out and uh we, we, we can get the housing elsewhere too. So uh again, staff, great job. Uh I I think we're on our way uh and hopefully it'll be a smooth ride. Alright, okay, thank you, Mister Chair.
Alright, thank you.
Mister, Mister Chair, if I may?
Yes, uh Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh just uh definitely understand the concerns being, you know, being brought up, uh but just for clarification purposes. Can we confirm the inclusion of that State of Brothers location? As a, as a consideration of site for this, for this purposes, or intensive purposes? I'd like to get that confirmation, uh Mister Chair.
If there's a need for any procedural element, Honorable Chair, I I'll second that request.
Okay, it was hard to decipher what-
Was it hard to hear me again, Mister Chair?
Mention, yeah. What was your question?
Oh, my apologies. I said, I I definitely understand, you know, the concerns of not wanting to go over arena numbers um too extensively. I definitely understand that, and I know that staff are gonna do a, a great job of narrowing down. But I definitely want to um make sure that at the end of the, towards the, toward the project, at least we really consider and and have confirmation that the State of Brothers location will be highly considered into this uh, into these numbers.
Yeah, what, what um Ms. Corpus and Councilmember Hamada mentioned is that uh you don't want to overstate your potential because it can, it can come back and bite you later on. Uh because this is not the last site, we in a cycle that we're gonna have. We're gonna have another one after, after eight years. In twenty twenty, after twenty twenty-nine, there's gonna be another cycle.
Absolutely. No, Mister Chair, I understand that, and I think-
Again, nothing prevents the staff from develop, from uh developing plans to market it and and if the owner, as mentioned earlier, if the owner wants to develop it differently, then they're always welcome to come to City Hall and pro- and propose their plans.
Honorable Chair, if I may? Honorable Chair?
Yes, uh Commissioner Garza?
Thank you so much again for the opportunity, Honorable, uh Chair. Um I I absolutely understand the uh, the logic of, you know, maybe holding this site off for a future development, uh you know, cycle with regards to arena, you know, I just, just a friendly reminder to all of us that that's the next cycle is eight years away. Um I would hate for our city to lose an opportunity uh to uh potentially incentivize that current owner and that site to be able to improve that site of versus what's in its current state right now. Um I personally don't see much of a, of a harm in having this site included in the analysis. Uh I think in the grand, in greater screen, uh scheme of things, uh one city uh with an additional site, uh I don't think will hurt or jeopardize the city's position with HCD in the future. So uh again, just the, which is echo Councilmember Sanchez's uh request that that site just be included. Uh and if we want to do a, uh we feel that we want to maintain a balance, I'm more than happy to consider removing another area that's been identified by staff in order to ensure that that site is included. I think considering its proximity to the ninety-one freeway, its location very visible. Uh I think it presents a very unique and exciting opportunity, especially at this point in time, great to be included. So uh again, just wanted to make that, that additional request and and ask for consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, how does staff feel about that?
Councilmember Santinas?
Yes.
We can take a look at that site and definitely include it in the analysis. I will say there has to be a give and take. So I think from a staff standpoint, what we would like to do is analyze that site, but potentially remove other locations that may not be as viable um to it. Because I don't want to overshoot our arena, um but at the same time, I am hearing a strong desire to include the State of Brothers site, which we can do. Um but from, I think from a staff perspective, we, if we do include that, we will be looking at other areas to shrink it down. And if that's okay with the Council and Planning Commission, um then we will move forward with doing that.
And when do you expect that to happen?
Pretty immediately.
Okay.
So Beth, you'll bring that back. You'll do the analysis. You'll bring it back as an action item the next time we meet with the Council and Commission on this, correct?
I can do that, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, very good.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Yes, Mister Chair, uh just one more comment. Again, thank you, staff. Uh uh again, um again, I'm, I'm okay with uh with adding it. Uh but I I'd, I'd agree with that compromise of of shaving other areas. Again, I just hate to use the phrase, it's just a number, uh because again, any, any area in town has potential for development. It's just what we're doing here is working on a plan to fulfill the arena uh allocation. Uh so uh I'm I'm okay. Uh and uh staff, right now, uh with these, I mean, with these planning areas now, did you come up with like over four thousand roughly?
Yeah, so we did run a development scenario and um, you know, with the downtown being at a hundred dwelling units per acre and all the other sites being between thirty to fifty dwelling units per acre, we're at six thousand one hundred eighty-four.
Oh, wow, okay.
We, we are high, and um that was purposeful.
Yeah.
Because again, we just wanted a general direction on if the council was comfortable with these areas, and then we would narrow it down to be closer to our arena number. Um and that is a task that is, that staff would have to do. Um but I I'm hearing what the Council and the Planning Commission are saying. Um it sounds like add the State of Brothers, find other areas to reduce it and get closer to the arena numbers. So we're very strategic going to HCD with our housing plan.
And Beth, don't forget, Beth, we have the economic analysis going on, on the downtown density to see what the cost of coming to a hundred units an acre or whatever, and then the spin-off economic cost. So we can come up with the true cost of actually building to that density or not, so that number may slide back and forth a little bit as we get more information on that.
Well, got it.
Okay, very good. Uh I, again, I just want to kind of caution, you know, overshooting our, our goal because um as you know, if Sacramento get, gets wind of this, then the, I'm concerned about the allocation uh for Rena in the next cycle. You know, if they identify, if they say, oh, you, Bellflower, you have more, you have more land available for development, and that's, that's gonna haunt us. Uh because keep in mind that um one of the things that they mentioned in the Rena allocation is accessibility to transit, accessible to jobs, but they are not in Bellflower. They're somewhere else. The jobs are not in Bellflower. So they live in Bellflower, but they work somewhere else. We're kind of fortunate because of our location, we're accessible by the freeway. And if we add the, the ma- the, the train come twenty twenty-eight, then Velver becomes more desirable for development. You know, i- it's uh, it's very exhaustive when we went to the Rena's, Rena allocation. And uh, and one thing that I want to mention is um we went to the appeal process, and the appeal process, the appeal, the, the basis for appeal was so limited. And of all the uh, the appeal, and so to speak, over thirty cities, five their appeal, only two were successful. Only two. And that's one thing that I want to mention before we close this meeting is there is a reform committee that was established under AB one oh one. We need to work with that to make sure that the Rena allocation is reformed because the, the mantra from Sacramento is one size fits all, and we know it doesn't. So we really need to work on that issue, because otherwise, the next cycle, I'm, I'm very concerned that our allocation will be much higher. Alright, having said that, um is, is there a motion to receive and file the report for today?
Mister Chair, uh before I make that motion, um I would definitely like to just clarify. I think um I understand that concern, and I understand the need to reduce elsewhere, and I think I apologize for not clarifying that as well. So I think the way that uh Ms. Corpus really explained it, I think, is, is where I'm at, is I understand. Um so I do want to echo that. I, I hear the concerns of everyone, and I understand that, and I'm not hoping to add above. I think we should get as close to those numbers, the uh minimal numbers as possible. Um with that, uh Mister Chair, I'd like to um make a motion to receive and file.
Okay. Uh motion by Councilmember Sanchez, seconded by Councilmember Hamada. Uh roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Hi.
Councilmember Santinas?
Hi.
Commissioner Garza?
To charge, before I vote, just right quick, just for clarity, um I know the motion was for staff, uh adopting staff's recommendation. This is also include the inclusion of the State of Brothers site and then staff uh subsequently going and looking to offset that, that, that number in another site in town, just for clarity.
Yes, that is-
That is my understanding.
And they'll come back.
Great, okay, then I, thank you.
Commissioner Mendez?
Hi.
Vice Chair Drink?
Hi.
Okay, motion carried. With that, thank you so much for the presentation. Again, thank you, staff, for this wonderful presentation. Uh it's very clear um what the marching order is, and I thank all my, my fellow council members, fellow commissioners uh for attending this meeting. And I really encourage our public to please getting, uh please be engaged. There's gonna be public meetings. Uh this is gonna be before the planning commission again at some point in the future. So you will be asked for your input, so please provide us your input because it is really important. It's a, it's a community effort uh to come up with this plan for the next eight years. So with that, uh this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.